The time is now five oh five. Good evening and welcome to the February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty four fiscal year two thousand and twenty five Superintendent's proposed operating public budget, public hearing. My name is Judy McInnes Murray, Board Chair. Before we begin, I would like to ask everyone to turn off any wireless communication devices to avoid any technical interference with the microphones and taping of the meeting. This meeting is currently being livestreamed via Zoom. We have Spanish interpretation services available this evening. Ms. Lopez, please announce that Spanish interpretation is available by clicking on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen.
La interpretación en español está disponible para los espectadores haciendo clic en el icono del globo en la parte inferior de la pantalla. Haga clic en ese globo y seleccione.
Thank you so much. For viewers who are not able to observe at this time, the meeting is being recorded and will be available for later viewing on Prince George's County Public Schools YouTube channel. This evening's meeting of the Board of Education is convened for the sole purpose of receiving public feedback on the fiscal year two thousand and twenty five Superintendent's proposed operating budget, which was presented on December seventh, two thousand and twenty three. The Board of Education appreciates your participation in this public hearing to voice your opinions on the fiscal year two thousand and twenty five Superintendent's proposed operating budget. We value the public's input to help us meet the needs of our students and staff in Prince George's County Public Schools collaboratively. Ms. Lopez, please call the role of Board Members in attendance.
Mrs. Adam Stafford? Mrs. Adam Stafford? Ms. Bruce Struthers?
Present.
Mr. Briggs?
Present.
Dr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Mrs. LaSaya Frazier? Mrs. LaSaya Frazier? Dr. Juanita Miller?
Here.
Dr. Zippa Miller?
Good evening, present.
Mrs. Routs? Ms. Walker?
Present.
Mr. Veda Forbes? I apologize, I didn't call Mr. Murray.
No problem, I'm here.
Thank you, I'm Mrs. McInnes Murray.
Here. I count ten members present. We have a forum. Public comment guidelines for registered speakers. You have registered to speak in a public comment forum where the Board of Education will listen to your comments, but will not address your comments. There are three minutes to make your, you have three minutes to make your presentations. You may not relinquish any part of your speaking time to another individual, nor address individuals or issues with profanity or derogatory terms. If you violate these guidelines, you will be warned once. If you continue, your comments will be muted and you may be removed from the meeting. Speakers are encouraged to use titles rather than names. For example, Chair, Board Member, Superintendent, Principal, etc. We thank you for adhering to these guidelines. Our first registered speaker for this evening is Del Van Chel Champagne, Dora Kennedy French Immersion Specialty School Capital Projects.
Mr. Champagne is not here. So far on the list, the first person we have is Benita Sewell Sewell, and I will be sending her over right now.
Thank you. Ms. Benita Sewell is an individual capital improvements.
Good afternoon, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hello, I'm gonna put my camera on. My name is Beniti Sewell, and I am a parent from Dora Kennedy French Immersion. I come to you tonight to make a plea to you, a passionate plea as a parent and a PTA Board Member. Recently, we had a town hall with the leadership of PG CPS, and specifically, we were given misinformation about the manner in which our school's decision to be moved to the Kenmore location. We were given misinformation and missing information. As you could imagine, we were counting on our leadership, our executive leadership, to provide us with sound information, to make sound decisions as families, to decide whether or not we, as a community, wanted to go to the Kenmore space. During that town hall, not only did the leadership mislead us, but post that meeting, we were privileged to what we call a hot mic discussion. A hot mic meaning, post the discussion, the executive leadership that was on that call was quoted as saying, "I don't understand why we are doubling down on a wrong decision." So as you can imagine, our parents are left shocked. We feel disenfranchised. We feel misled by the leadership that we actually put our trust in. On that call, we also were referred to, not as a school, but our Dora Kennedy French Immersion was referred to as a program. We were told specifically that the state does not prioritize programs and that the funding was being prioritized to neighborhood schools. As you can imagine, as a parent, what that made us feel like. We were basically told by a school district that has one of their priorities as equity, that our children would not be treated equitably because we were part of a specialty program. We, as parents, come to you today shaken up. We come to you humbly to ask for your support as partners, to make sure that we receive all of the information that we are entitled to, to find out more about what were the factors that went behind choosing Kenmore and why we are being sent to a school that is substandard to where we've been. The reason why I say it's substandard is not only does this Kenmore school that we're moving to not have potable water, we were told that on the call by the leadership, but we were also told that there is asbestos at the school. As you can imagine, this is really frightening for us as a parent community. We also were told that there were no more options for us, that everything had been considered. During that hot mic discussion, it was revealed that Goddard, Goddard, the Montessori school, which is within a few miles of our school, actually will be a viable, potentially viable space, swing space. During that call, one of the leadership, the executive leadership, was quoted as saying that our school and Robert Goddard hate each other. It was an egregious, sorry, comment to be made, it was irresponsible. We ask that you represent us behind closed doors as leaders with integrity, that our children will be able to have access to schools and permanent spaces just like our neighborhood schools. We should not be treated as if our children are not as, you know, a priority like other schools. Dr. Coleman, I see that you have shown your face.
Excuse me, Ms. Sewell, Ms. Sewell, we can't call names.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
Your time has expired.
Okay.
Okay, so thank you very much for speaking with us tonight.
I appreciate the time, thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker in the queue that I see is Nadia Cameron, School Based Clericals, Local twenty-two fifty.
Ms. Nadia is not here, but Mr. Delvin Champagne has arrived, and he's available.
Okay, then we will go to Mr. Del Van Champagne, Dora Kennedy French Immersion Specialty School, Capitol Heights.
Hello, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for having me. My name is Delvin Champagne, I'm a parent of three students here at Dora Kennedy French Immersion. Me and my wife, we're both educators, me and my wife, we're both occupational therapists licensed in DC, Maryland, Virginia. And we have graduate degrees, so we have done research and we understand the data. The research shows that Dora, our ask today is to stabilize Dora Kennedy French Immersion. The research shows, the data, Dora Kennedy is the number one performing middle school in the county. The data shows that Dora Kennedy is the number three highest performing elementary school in the county behind the two tag schools, Heather, Heather Hill, and I think it's Glen Arden Woods. We are asking you to stabilize Dora Kennedy. Dora Kennedy is a Blue Ribbon School, we were the Merlin PTA School of Excellence. We have great math and reading outcomes. And follow the data. The outcomes are clear, and we want to maintain our high math and reading outcomes, stabilize Dora Kennedy as an educator. Or you guys, as you look at the budget, focus your attention on schools that have low math and reading outcome, they have low park assessment outcomes. Dora Kennedy French Immersion was a, was a five star. When they started doing the ratings before pandemic, we were five stars in the Merlin Report Card. Please, in the words of of Ricky Smiley, leave us alone. Let us just be. We don't bother anybody, Dora Kennedy, we're just good citizens, good students, good resident, a good school, we're doing well, to stabilize Dora Kennedy. We just ask you, any restructuring, redistricting, restructuring plan in the county, allocate the funds through, in the budget to schools that have, that need more attention, that have low performing, low outcomes, and we want, we just ask you to just please let us just be. We're in a good space, it's getting ready to be testing season this spring. We're doing well, and let Dora Kennedy just be in peace. And I ask you for that, to maintain a high academic outcome that we've been doing since we were Blue Ribbon over the last ten years.
Thank you so much. Next, I have on my list Valerie Perkins.
Yes, I've sent Ms. Perkins a notification, I hope she will accept it. We do have Ms. Iman Freeman, she's already in the queue.
Okay, then we will go to Iman Freeman and come back to Ms. Perkins. Ms. Iman Freeman is an individual affordable limited payment. I don't see her. Oh, there you are, okay. Yep.
Oh.
Well, I could hear her. I don't know, I could hear her, though.
I think she was saying she had bad reception, let me see. Ms. Iman, are you still there?
Yeah, I do, I have bad reception, can I go after, can I go a little later, it's just a dead zone where I am right now.
Well, we can hear you unless you want us to see your face, so let me know what you want me to do. Ms. Freeman? Okay, I don't think she can hear me, so Ms. Ms. Barton, where do you want me to go next? Who's in the queue?
Leah Baker is available, she should be coming over, there she is at the bottom.
Okay, Ms. Leah Baker, she's an individual Capitol Heights Projects. Leah Baker, let's see.
Hi there, good afternoon, everybody, thank you, good afternoon and good evening. My name is Leah Baker, I am also a parent at Dora Kennedy French Immersion School. First of all, I would like to express my appreciation to all this evening for having a public meeting with your constituents. It's such an important part of the work that you do. I'd also like to share my appreciation to those of you elected, appointed staff for your work in support of the schoolchildren at, within the county, within Prince George's County. As Ms. Sewell and Mr. Champagne previously stated, I'm gonna keep my remarks short because I don't have a whole lot new to add to what they shared. But as they stated, the process by which the community of Dora Kennedy French Immersion School found out about our potential move leaves a lot to be desired, as expressed by the parents and students and staff. So what we ask for you all, as our elected officials and appointed officials moving forward, is that we work on a transparent process that allows the family members, the staff, many of whom have been working at the school since its inception, and the students, to have a clear understanding, transparent process, and it feels like a fair decision in terms of where our ultimate home is. One thing that my fellow parents haven't mentioned yet, but have alluded to, but I want to point out expressly, is the importance of sense of place in a school. While we are not a community school, we draw from students from all over the northern part of the county. One of the catchphrases that the PTA likes to say is that we're one community, many neighborhoods. And it's important for a community of many neighborhoods to have some stability. And so I just beseech you all to help us figure out how to have a permanent, or as permanent as you can get in life, school that meets the basic needs that our children deserve in terms of safe, clean, potable water, or an alternative solution, and so that is what I will leave you with this evening, and again, thank you all for your commitment to our children.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. I see in the queue Ms. Kristen Skendall, SKFI parent, PTA member, and Hyattsville resident. Capital Improvement Planning.
Thank you, Chairwoman. My name is Dr. Kristen Skendall, and I join my fellow Dora Kennedy parents in sharing some information with you today. I'm a twelve-year resident of Prince George's County and hold advanced degrees in education, working in the education field for more than twenty years. As Ms. Baker shared, the communication regarding the proposed move had left our community with many questions, particularly regarding the capital improvement planning process and decision-making. This has not been as transparent as outlined in the budget. In an effort to have transparent data that represent our DKFI families, our PTA surveyed our community to gain a better understanding of the impact of the proposed move to Greater Landover. As of today, two hundred and thirty of the approximately five hundred families in our community have responded. I share with you some of the data that are relevant to this decision-making. Only twenty-four percent of the families who completed the survey would have sent their child to a neighborhood school in Prince George's County if they were not enrolled at DKFI. DKFI and other specialty programs are an enrollment boost for the county and a way to retain students in our public school system. Currently, twelve percent of the respondents live over ten miles from the current Greenbelt location. However, one-third, thirty percent, live over ten miles from the proposed Kenmore location. Given the bus driver shortage and current bus route times, this increased distance causes significant concern for our school community members located in the northern parts of the Ketchment area. Further, based on current information, only five percent of our respondents support the move, and only thirty-seven percent of scholars are committed to staying enrolled in DKFI if the move were to occur as outlined. This indicates both low support and considerable upheaval among our community. As Mr. Champagne noted, a community that consistently excels in rankings of elementary and middle schools in the county, bringing up all of the performance scores for Prince George's County Public Schools. Finally, and most importantly, respondents are overwhelmingly disappointed and frustrated by the way in which Prince George's County Public School executive leadership announced this move, the overall process related to budget and planning. We ask Board Members to work with our community and PG CPS administration to ensure the best solution, a solution based on transparent data with consideration to the well-being of our students, teachers, and staff. The solution should also be long-term with clear and truthful information. Our children, their teachers, and school staff, as well as our entire community, those are well-thought-out planning and transparent decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I understand that Ms. Matang Okoye, PTA School Funding and Renovations, is next.
Good evening, my name is Montenay Okoye, I am a real estate agent in the Prince George's County area, but I'm also a parent of a kindergartner and soon to be kindergartner in the second grade at Dora Kennedy French Immersion, I'm also a PTA treasurer, so I come to you as a parent, but I also come to you as a business owner and real estate agent in the county. And what I am seeing is that a lot of my clients, when their kids get to school age, they are either leaving the county or having to choose private schools because they're not comfortable with the neighborhood schools. So when we chose Dora Kennedy, it was after a lot of research, and I decided that I did not want to complain about the county. I wanted to be a solution, I wanted to join the PTA, I wanted to get involved, and that was my stance. And so we chose Dora Kennedy, and just being at the school, joining the PTA, I am very grateful for the community that we have, I'm grateful for the principal, for the teachers. However, I am not grateful for the building that we're in, being someone who is passionate about renovation and and helping other clients that are in neighborhoods that houses range between five hundred to over a million dollars. I know what the parents are getting with their schools, and we know that schools are a very important part of why people buy into a neighborhood. I have people that have called me about coming to Greenbelt because they want to put their kids at Dora Kennedy French Immersion. So I just, I just want to appeal to you to just, you know, think about the parents, think about where we are, think about maybe not going for an eighty million dollar school, but just putting some money into the current school that we have or another location, so our kids all have an opportunity for a bright school, a renovated school, so that they can learn and just have their, what everybody deserves, which is a safe and and clean place to be able to learn and get an education, thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Barton, I need you to let me know who is in the queue.
That was the last person that was in the queue. We sent the request to Ms. Perkins several times, and she declined it, so we can't move her over unless she accepts the request.
And what about Ms. Freeman? She was in a weak zone, remember?
Yeah, let me check this, she should still be here, I didn't remove her, let me check.
Okay, thanks.
We also have Timothy Myers and Tanya Wingfield, I'm not sure if they're in the queue, but there's a couple more people on the list, thank you.
Yeah, no, they're not in the queue.
Yeah, they're telling me who they can see, so. That's dope. We've been jumping all over.
Chair, Timothy Myers is gonna log back in, he's in but can't be seen, so he's gonna log back in.
I appreciate that, thank you. Any other assistance from any Board Members, if anyone on the list, because I don't want to leave anybody out.
Ms. Iman is not here, Ms. Iman Freeman. She didn't, she left and didn't return.
Okay, so now we're waiting for Timothy Meyer, he's logging in. And is there anyone else, ladies?
No. Ms. Wingfield is not here, Shannon Reed, Yvonne Payne, Nadia Cameron, and Joseph Ham, those were others who signed up, but they are not in the queue.
Okay, thank you. So let me know when Mr. Meyer is here.
Chair, I see that Timothy Meyer's name has been added to the list.
Okay, I don't see him yet.
I just moved him over, he should be popping in shortly.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Timothy Meyer, Mount Rainier Elementary PTO, protecting the Prince George's County Public Schools budget.
Thank you all, and thank you to this board for coming together to oppose HB three ninety-six and three ninety-eight. With so many politicians willing to put our budget at risk, this board is standing up for our kids. Superintendent House has warned that these bad bills would be catastrophic. So I'm urging you to stand strong and keep fighting. I don't mince words, and I won't start tonight. County and Annapolis politicians are currently trying to sneak through two bills that could cause a sixty million dollar shortfall for PG CPS. They think it's easier to sell our kids out than find the political will to do their jobs, and they hope parents won't notice. Bad news, your scheme is going public tonight. Both bills were filed late, no chance for parent input, rushed through committee without notice. These bills are sneakier than George Santos, taking money currently locked for education, redirecting it to pay for other obligations, letting politicians use the rest to plug other budget gaps. Kids can't vote, so let's cut from them. After chronically underfunding education for decades, some have the audacity to say PG CPS takes too much. Hogwash. We've spent years stretching every dollar, making every tough choice in schools left crumbling as politicians let an eight-point-five billion dollar backlog build up. So here's a question for every politician. What are your bigger priorities if not education? Are you for special education or special interests? We're not asking for a blank check, but making up decades of underfunding inequity is not negotiable. And no more pitting one school expense against another. We need money for classroom expenses, for school construction, for higher teacher salaries. They've all been underfunded. This game of survivor school funding has got to stop. We need to tell the public the truth. There is an education funding fiscal cliff coming in the years ahead, and we're gonna need more tax revenue to provide the quality education that our kids deserve. Don't play word games. Our kids are worth investing in, we believe in public education, and yes, it's going to take more taxes to equitably fund it. Some legislators are taking this challenge seriously, offering real solutions to try to fix our budget. Delegate Martinez from Hyattsville area has a bill that would tax social media companies to create a mental health care fund for kids. This board is already on record about the social media crisis in our schools, so I'm urging you to get behind this effort. We can do our part to help Annapolis fill these funding gaps. Each of you knows what a sixty million dollar shortfall would do to PG CPS. Parents know how it will hurt our kids. Let's make sure county and Annapolis politicians get the message. Thank you all.
Thank you so much. I see that Ms. Ima Friedman has returned.
Iman Freeman.
Iman Freeman, thank you.
I hope that y'all can hear me, so.
We can hear you, we can hear you, I'm just introducing you. An individual affordability limit pay, payment.
Correct, so good evening, Board, my name is Iman Freeman, I'm a proud Board Mom of a first grader at Phyllis C. Williams Spanish Emergent School. I wanted to just quickly address you all about the affordability payments and the ever-increasing crisis that I'm seeing unfolding. I initially, this matter was initially brought to my attention after reading a news article about the affordability payments. As you all know, PG, PGPCS has decided to undergo a private-public partnership. And it's my understanding that PGPCS is the only county in the state of Maryland that decided to enter in a private-public partnership to build new schools. And while I think the external-facing narrative And while I think the external-facing narrative, especially on the websites, is that this is a landmark, you know, model and a landmark financing model, my question to the board is at what cost? Right? We are seeing, right now, I believe, with Phase Two, in Year One, the first availability payment that the county would, I'm sorry, PGPCS would have to cover, looks like it's going to be $68 million out of operating funds. And I'm sorry, that's not all county, right? So from what I understand, the county, the state, and the school board together make up $68 million. And of course, we all know that the county and the state's contributions are capped at $37 million together collectively, and PGPCS is responsible for making up the difference. And so right now, that's looking like that's going to be $27 million, but the final number will be decided in June. And so my question to all of you all is, from what I'm understanding, what I'm reading, because of this affordability of payment and because it is ever-increasing, the PGPCS has already had to make some concessions with the new schools that they're building, right? Concessions such as they've had to reduce square footage by 100,000 square feet, right? Less parking spaces, less outside amenities. And so again, I ask to you, at what cost? Right? This public-private partnership, at what cost is it costing to us, right? To parents, to teachers, to staff? Now, I know that many, many of these decisions were probably made before all of you took office, right? And so a lot of you are beholden to your predecessors' decisions. But if this is a case of, you know, you all needing help from parents, right? To let the state and the county know that they need to do better, right, in helping with these affordability payments, help us help you. I ask that you all be more transparent about this issue. You know, there is no reason why, since I read that article in early January, that I've had to attend seven meetings from three different governing bodies to gain a semblance of understanding when it comes to school construction financing. And so I really want to implore you all, this is an important decision, right? Decisions that we make with capital financing, with building schools, they will literally have decades-long impact. And so I ask that you all be more transparent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. I see that we have Valerie Perkins. Next.
Hello.
Hi, Ms. Perkins. Ms. Perkins, there's an individual traffic issue surrounding the school.
Yes.
You may start.
Hi, I'm Valerie Perkins, and I live in the southern part of Prince George's County, like five minutes away from Akikik Academy. There's a very busy intersection, Berry Road and Livingston Road. There's a four-way stop sign. The traffic is very heavy on this two-lane highway road. And every time that I go past the school, whether it's in the morning or in the evening, it is terrible congestion. There's no type of lights, nobody controlling the traffic. And we, as citizens that drive this road every day in this school zone, we don't stop and let the buses go in or come out with these children on the buses. We have parents, a lot of parents. No one walks to the school, period. The parents or the public school system, the buses, they bring the kids to school. But if they can't get in, you almost see crashes almost every day going down here. It's because we're not being considered of the school buses with these kids on it, and these kids have to be safe. So my concern is that these children are safe on these school buses and are, you know, able to get to school safely and to leave safely, and that we have some type of control, a police officer, someone to stop the traffic, so these buses can come in and these kids can get to and from school safely. And it isn't long. I'm just a concerned parent, and my kids' days are at school. It's over, but I'm just concerned in reference to all these other children, and I would just like to see this corrected. And I hope that the county can find money in a budget to do a infrastructure with this roadway. It is very, very bad. And thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Barton, do we have anyone else in the queue?
No, we do not. Ms. Perkins was the last one.
Okay. Thank you so much. There were no written comments which, for tonight's board meeting. Next steps and adjournment. The time is now 5:40. And the February 15, 2024 fiscal year 2025 superintendent's proposed operating budget public hearing is adjourned. We will reconvene in the fiscal year 2025 budget work session at 6:00 PM.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. I apologize for the interruption. Ms. Yvonne Payne has showed up.
Okay, board members, we will listen to what is the name, please, again?
Yvonne Payne.
Yvonne Payne. I see it. I see it. Okay, so we haven't adjourned yet, so we will listen to Yvonne Payne Delvin, I'm sorry. Yvonne Payne, a school-based clerical, school-based clericalist twice. Thank you. So where are you? I want to see.
There she is.
Good evening. I was not sure that I was to be speaking tonight. I am a guidance secretary at Third Good Marshall Middle School. I am an executive board member for Local 2250. I am the board member representative for the school-based clerical chapter. And so I, with my counterpart, Ms. Nadia Cameron, we were speaking on behalf of the school-based clerical. I know that you've sent our information on possibly locking some of our positions and helping our school-based clerical men and women out this year. We want, we presented this proposal to the previous superintendent, Ms. Golson.
We're not calling names, please. We. Okay, thanks.
Okay, the previous superintendent. And so we wanted to present this one as well to the new superintendent, some of the proposals that we have for our school-based clerical. We gave a overall picture of possibly locking some of the positions and helping out our secretary pool by giving them additional help because some of our schools, the elementary schools for one, they may have just one secretary. And with that being just one person, you're asking that person to do a lot of jobs. And they really do need help. If you have one secretary, that person is answering the phones. They're also buzzing people in. They're also fielding questions from children as well as staff. They're also registering and enrolling and withdrawing students. And so with that one person doing multiple jobs, it's very hard for them to do a job and do it well. So we were looking at, you know, possibly adding Sec One and giving that Sec One the ability to be there a little longer than 10 months, because most Sec Ones are 10 months. And once that Sec One is gone for the summer behind with the teachers, then it's all on that Sec Two to perform all those jobs and try to register and withdraw children and do whatever she's doing for that principal. And that is extremely hard during the summer months. Because as you know, we do a lot of withdrawing and enrolling in that time. And so having that jobs on one person is very difficult. So we are hoping that you take our proposals in consideration when you're doing your budget and at least give us some help this year.
Thank you. Thank you so much for speaking with us this evening.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Ms. Barton, I will do a wait time. Are there any more speakers? Because we want to make sure that we allow everyone an opportunity to speak.
Absolutely. Ms. Nadia Cameron has arrived.
Okay. Then now we will see Ms. Nadia Cameron. Okay, she's school-based clerical, Local 2250.
Good afternoon. As my counterpart also said, we did present that, and we just wanted to thank you all for what was presented and accepted. It is a great start, and I know that there is a lot that has to still be done on behalf of the clericals. And we want to thank you for what you were able to look at and help us out with. There are still some things we would like to see done, especially where it comes to the classifications, because like my counterpart said, we have titles, job titles that are overlapping, which I think creates a lot of confusion for the clericals when it comes to roles and responsibilities. And that creates a lot of pressure for sometimes when it comes down to even the principals finding placement or allowing to find other placement for other new secretaries to come in. Because most of the times, there are multiple responsibilities on one person. So redefining some of the job descriptions and roles or titles, job titles, clarifying some of that, I think, will assist in some of the confusion and hopefully allow for some of the clarification in what was presented and hopefully allow for a little bit more, what am I trying to say? A little bit more a little bit more help to the school-based clericals, because there's a lot of pressure on what the workload consists of right now. Because like I said, there are a lot of job titles that are overlapping for one person, where it should be at least three people doing that one job because the job titles are overlapping. And that was where the request came in for the review of the classifications along with having some of those important or yeah, those important positions locked. And I will end it there, and thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Ms. Barton, are we, where are we on our list?
That is everyone except for two, and I've checked the list over and over. They are not here. That's everyone.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you so much. So the time is now 5:48. And the February 15, 2024 fiscal year 2025 superintendent's proposed operating budget public hearing is adjourned. We will reconvene in the fiscal year 2025 budget work session at 6:00 PM. There is a link in your calendars, board members. And I believe the link for the public, they can join the public work session on the Board of Education's website. Thank you all, and have a good night.